Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Councilmember Slusiewicz?
Here.
Councilmember Genoway?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davies?
Here.
And Mayor McCloskey?
Present.
Thank you, we have a call.
Thank you. I would like to call up for the invocation Pastor Tom Gastil from the Aliso Creek Presbyterian Church. Please come forward Pastor.
Honorable Mayor and council members, my church is in Aliso Viejo but I'm from the far fairland of Lake Forest. So, we bring you greetings, let me pray. You God are the source of all meaning, purpose, beauty, and truth. The one in whom we live and move and have our being. God, I thank you that you are personal and dynamic, transcendent and yet knowable. And so God, on behalf of these people, I thank you for creating this world and calling it good. And for the many good gifts that you shower on us. Our bodies, our health, our homes, food on the tables, and clothes on our back. God, we thank you together for this country where our civic leaders are put in place not through violence but by votes. And God, as Americans, keep us from taking our freedoms and privileges for granted. And we thank you for this city of Laguna Niguel. This beautiful place where we get to live and raise our families. Lord, I thank you for these civil servants. For their time, their concern, and their personal sacrifices to lead this city. God strengthen and guide them. I pray that you would give us as leaders and citizens of our cities and counties in this country. God, give us resolve and conviction, humility, and conciliatory attitudes where we need to compromise and work together, which is so often God. Lord, these folks are stewards and so I pray that you would give them the prudence and the energy and the focus that they need to be strong and good stewards. And God, today we lift up those civic servants who literally put their lives on the line. Our fire department servants and police force, our military. God, keep them safe and encourage and uphold them. We are grateful for law and order for without those things we descend into chaos. And these types of meetings which we so often take for granted cannot occur. Help law enforcement to promote what is good and to suppress what is destructive and hurtful and violent and evil. Help them to do that with firmness and restraint and calm and again, keep them safe. And God, we pray that you would come alongside those in this city who are broken in body and relationships. Those who are facing financial struggles or ruin. Some of us have immediate neighbors who have faced horrific tragedies or quieter sorrows. Perhaps, God, even some who are here. It's so easy to hide the challenges that we're facing. So help us, as the motto says, to trust not ultimately in ourselves but in you. And God, I thank you ultimately for your great gift, your son Jesus Christ. The one who had all honor and rights and riches and privilege. The one who though, gave up his power to become the greatest servant of all. All the way toward sacrificing his very life for us. Thank you that he calls people to come and rest for his yoke is easy and his burden is light and gracious. So God, help us not only to strive but to rest. And I pray this in the name of Jesus Christ and in the power of your spirit Father. Amen. Thank you.
Boy Scout Troop 772 come forward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. My notes only said two, okay.
Audience, please remain standing. Caller guard pack 772, pack 773, and troop 772, please advance. Please place your hand over your heart. Those who are in uniform, please salute. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Audience, you may be seated.
Okay, don't go away, we're coming down. We're really pleased to have you here to present the flag to us. And I'd like you to give us your name, your school.
I'm Justin Minigar, I go to Dana Hills, I'm in 10th grade.
Zachary, um, Hidden Hills Elementary School.
I am Bys, I go to George White and I am in 3rd grade.
I'm Brent Turner of the Troop 772.
And I'm Lorraine Hines, I'm with pack 772.
Thank you, we're so proud to have you here. And we know that it's a great commitment that you do when you're in the Boy Scouts. And we love you all. And this is an opportunity to take some photographs. If there's anybody in the audience that wants to take photographs, we can take an official photograph here, okay? Thank you. You may retire the colors. We're gonna now move on to presentations. First, we have a resolution commending Justin Minigar on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. And at this time, I'd like to have Justin come forward for the presentation. Justin? And for the record, a happy father is also in attendance. Justin, we have a resolution from the City of Laguna Niguel commending you on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. And only 4% of all boys entering scouting attain this rank. And it is indeed a very prestigious honor. And one of the things that I've learned about Eagle Scouts is they go on through life with the same dedication and perseverance. You have to obtain a minimum of 21 merit badges? How many did you get?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Gee, we should've given you two of these. You completed a Eagle project with the revitalization, rejuvenation, and beautification of the vacant garden surrounding the Rangers office at the main entrance to the Laguna Niguel Regional Park. And I've seen that area, it's beautiful. And whereas Justin Minigar, a Laguna Niguel resident and 10th grade student at Dana Hills High School, has demonstrated all the skills necessary to attain the rank of Eagle Scout and has pushed himself to the highest possible level of achievement. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Laguna Niguel City Council wishes to congratulate Justin Minigar on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and commends him for his dedication and commitment to superior performance. Come on over, we're gonna take the official photograph. You get to hold that. Very good, we have, don't go away because we have some other certificates to be presented to you. I have a certificate from the Senate, California State Legislature, signed by our Senator Patricia Bates. And I won't read it all, but I will say Senator Bates has said, "Now it is with great deal of pleasure that I recommend the above-named scout, Justin Minigar, for his outstanding achievement in qualifying for the Eagle Scout Award and congratulate him upon receipt of this most noteworthy honor." Signed by Patricia C. Bates, member of the Senate, 36th Senate District. I don't know, okay. You can hold two, okay. What else we got here? We have a certificate from the California Legislature Assembly. Certificate of recognition presented to Justin Minigar. Congratulations in earning this elite award of recognition of your scouting achievements. And you are an outstanding example of an American in action and you've demonstrated great leadership ability. And this is signed by Bill Bro, Assemblyman, 73rd District. Okay, did you want to do this one? Come on up. Introduce yourself to the crowd.
Thank you Mayor. I'm Paul Walters, Chief of Staff for Supervisor Lisa Bartlett. Lisa Bartlett has a certificate of recognition for you. It says, "Congratulations on your achievement of the Eagle Scout Award." She's extremely proud of you and what you've done and what you've accomplished. And I think everyone here knows that it takes tremendous commitment and it'll follow you throughout your entire life. So on behalf of the supervisor, congratulations and outstanding job.
Thank you Paul. Fred, come on over and stand next to your son. In fact, you can maybe hold a couple of those things for her. I just love those cameras that click and have a flash. Then I know the picture's been taken. Thank you, I think that's it Justin, thank you. Congratulations. I think we might be, I see. Next, we're gonna have a proclamation declaring May 26th through September 1st, 2015 as drowning prevention awareness season. At this time, I would like to have Brian Price, Division Chief for the Orange County Fire Authority, come forward for the presentation. Chief, we've designated May 26th to September 1st as drowning prevention awareness period. And there's a lot of whereas's and I think you're gonna have some comments, so I won't read them all. It says, "Now therefore, I, Mayor Jerry McCloskey, on behalf of the Laguna Niguel City Council, join the Orange County Fire Authority in declaring May 26th through September 1st for drowning prevention awareness and encourage all Laguna Niguel residents, schools, recreational facilities, businesses, and homeowner associations to become partners in preparedness by increasing their knowledge of proper safety measures to follow in preventing unnecessary drownings." Chief?
Well, the mayor told me to keep it under 30 minutes, so I've got about 29 more to go. Just real quick, one of the things I wanted to point out is an unfortunate fact. California leads the nation in drownings. And drowning is one of those things that is 100% preventable. So again, I'm gonna keep it really short because I know how it is when you try to get a lesson across to some folks. We wanna really reinforce that. It is preventable and it happens in two age groups mainly. The under 5 and the over 50. And a lot of people know about the under 5 group and they really focus on that. But I wanna kinda talk about the over 50 group. When we look at some of our information we receive about drownings, the majority of drownings that are fatal occur in over 50-year-olds and it's not the younger group. The younger group are more susceptible to it because there's a lack of, I'll say, attention or barriers put in place. But the 50-year-olds and above, what happens is they think they're immune to it. They think, "I can either swim or I'm okay to be out here by myself." So, one of the things we'd like to reinforce, don't swim alone. Even if you're an adult, even if you know how to swim, don't be alone. Because you can have a cardiac condition, you can have other kind of impairments, we'll use that term, that might inhibit your ability to swim or you could just have a simple accident. So again, learn the ABCs of it. Always, always have someone there. Make sure you have barriers around your pool. And if you get a chance, learn CPR. It will save a life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you Chief. Our last presentation is the Molten Niguel Water District update on the Governor's Executive Order, Drought Emergency. At this time, I would like to have June Lepez, General Manager for the Molten Niguel Water District, come forward for your presentation. June?
Good evening Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for inviting us to talk to you about a very pertinent topic, the drought. And I know we've seen lots of information on the news. The coverage has been great. And this has been very helpful in raising awareness at a very critical time. I kept the presentation brief so there's enough time to answer any questions that you may have. So you've heard it said, "This is a drought unlike any other." And it truly is. There's various facts that indicate, and we've had droughts in the past, but not like this. When you look at the state water project that brings the water to us from Northern California, for the first time in the project's history, last year we got zero allocation, we didn't get a drop. When you look at our other source, Colorado River, and you see the picture, that's the Lake Mead. And that white part you see is what we call bathtub ring. And that's because it shows how far the water levels have dropped. It has never dropped so low and it's at a critical point. If it drops any further, and it's not a lot that it has to fall, they would literally have to shut down the pumps. And so both of our sources that this area is 100% dependent on, Northern California and Colorado, we're looking at a very critical time. When you look at just month of March alone, it's been the hottest month on record. So again, strong indicators that this drought is truly unlike anything that we've experienced in California. Here's a whole bunch of state actions. And I hate to put a lot of words on a PowerPoint slide, but it really indicates the level of actions that the state has taken. Again, this has never happened before. And I take you back to January of last year when the governor declared an emergency. And at the time, he asked for Californians to voluntarily reduce 20%. We didn't see that happen. And so he asked the State Water Resource Control Board to exercise its authority to issue emergency regulation, which it did in June of last year. And this was an interesting time for Molten because part of that mandate required mandatory restricted watering days. If you were all around in 2009, we tried that. And it didn't work for our service area. Because again, every community is unique, every customer is different. And so in 2009, in response to the drought back then, which wasn't as bad as it is now, we did that. We had full-time employees patrolling neighborhoods, issuing citations and fines. We did that for a year and a half and we didn't get a very good response. And we didn't see good results. We did not see a reduction in water usage. And that was because in the days that people could water, they tended to overwater. And the backlash from our customers, who just did not appreciate the fact that we were going onto their property, telling them how to manage their property, that was not well received. So we heard the message loud and clear from our community. So when this mandate came down, we're very concerned. We provided comments and testimony to the state board demonstrating our experience. And so a special section was carved out in the regulation to recognize agencies such as ours that have allocation-based rate structure, or we call water budget-based rate structure. Agencies with that particular rate structure and a demonstrated success in conservation, we were allowed to take an alternate path. We had to submit a plan that showed that everything that we have done, all the things that we are doing and the efforts that we're planning going forward, was superior to what the state regulations were mandating. So we were able to show that through this plan. So we got to go take the alternate path. And we were one of two agencies in California that were given that exemption. The second round of regulations came out from the state board in March of 2015. It extended a lot of the regulations from June, but also added some additional elements. And then we all heard about the Governor's Executive Order, April 1st. And this was a sobering day for him because usually this is the date that we check our snowpack. And lo and behold, there was no snow. And so at that point, he said, "This is a very serious condition." He witnessed it himself and issued the executive order to require 25% statewide reduction. And there were other elements of that executive order. And so the state board had to react because again, much of the elements in the executive order are under the purview of the state board. So in May of 2015, they adopted regulations to enforce parts of the executive order that was under their powers. Now, the governor issued the executive order April 1st. The state board adopted the regulation May 5th. That's a very narrow timeframe in which for the executive order to be issued and for the regulations to be adopted. So it was a frenzy between April 1st and May 5th. All the agents throughout the state of California were providing comments, engaging the state board, and we were right there with them. And what came out of that was a calculation that determined, depending on the area that you lived, what your percentage reduction requirements are to reach the statewide 25% reduction. The state doesn't have a lot of data. When you look at the number of water providers in California, it's over 1,000. It's a crazy number that most people don't realize. When you look at agencies that have more than 3,000 connection, which is where the regulations really speak to, you're looking at over 400. And so there was a need to calculate a way to assign percentages. So the best data that they had was residential gallons per person per day. It is not an accurate data, it is not a refined data. State board were the first one to tell you that the methodology could be better, but they just didn't have time. They had to react, we're going into summer months, we had to do something. So based on that, for Molten Niguel Service Area, we're required to reduce our water usage 20%. And the regulations are in effect for nine months. And so what the governor is asking is that in that nine months, that we need to see the required reduction by agencies. And so there's been a lot of discussion. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the engagement that we have with the state and some of the things that we're doing going forward. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way. So we continue to work with the state board and their staff. Again, they have an excellent team up there and they're very understanding of the conditions. We have a great relationship because we do have a relationship with the state board members and their staff. We work very closely. In one of their meetings, they even recognized the service areas and the communities within Molten Niguel's area about how great that all of you, the customers, have been doing in meeting the challenges in the drought and even before the drought. So there is a clear recognition that our communities are doing very well. So we will continue to engage, there are various work groups that are being planned here in the next couple of months. During the next nine months, we have to figure out what is the long-term solution. Because this is a long-term relationship. After the regulations are over at the nine-month mark, it's not really over. There's gonna be additional regulations. There are permanent regulations that are being talked about. So this is the new normal going forward. We're not gonna be done with this anytime soon. And even if we see a couple of days of rain here and there, we're not out of the woods. So we can expect this to be our new reality going forward. That's why we need to stay engaged so that we can make sure that the interests of our communities are represented. And again, all the great things that our customers are doing is communicated to the state. And we're doing a lot of customer communication. And this is a very valuable venue for us to go to council meetings and talk to the council members or staff and the communities that tune in. And also continue to work with all the individual residents. We've been doing a lot of mailing, a lot of outreach, I'll show you some of that here in a second. We brought some collateral material and we had those handed out to the council members so you could see some samples of the information that are going out to all the customers, including you. Let's talk about partnerships because this is really critical. And when it comes to partnerships, we have a long history with Laguna Niguel and I thank you so much for it. We have a great relationship with your staff. They've always been very proactive, very helpful. And because of that, we've done a lot. When we looked at our water usage from January to April of last year to this year, we're seeing about seeing about 12% reduction in city-owned properties. So that's great. Just keep up the great work, and we'll work with your staff and the communities to even do more. We're expanding use of recycled water. We're doing a recycled water master plan right now. We've identified approximately 600 areas in just Laguna Niguel alone, that could potentially be retrofitted for recycled water for irrigation. So we're exploring all of that to see where the opportunities are, what kind of financial support is needed to make all those things happen. As you know, the Crown Valley Medium Project, that was a great project, and how timely was it? When you drive down, we've gotten a lot of great feedback, and that was an excellent partnership, and it couldn't come at a better time. And this is the kind of forward-thinking that your city has always done, and we benefit from that as a community, and we're very happy to help as your water utility. Also, the Park Project, we worked with you to get some funding through OCTA. So again, we've had a long string of success in achieving what we need to do in terms of water-saving and raising awareness. And just Saturday, we had our Live Smart Community Event right here in the Civic Center, so we thank you for that. It was a great partnership with the city and the Chamber. We had over 600 people turn out, and it rained a little bit, which was so ironic, but we said, "See, when you do your part, Mother Nature does her part, so let's keep up the good work." It was a great turnout, got a lot of great feedback, so I thank you for that partnership. And again, as we go forward, we're going to need to do more of that to raise awareness. So really, the centerpiece of how is Molten going to get that 20% reduction in its communities is really based on our rate structure and our water shortage contingency plan. Our rate structure has been recognized by the state as really an effective, powerful tool. It's proven. More than 20% of our reduction has been directly attributed to our rate structure, and that's been studied. So it's not just anecdotal, we've actually done modeling to prove that. And all of our rate structure, every component of it, complies with Prop 218. I know we've seen a lot of things in the news about the legal, the legality of rate structure. We're very confident, because again, San Juan being our neighbors, we work very closely with them to learn from their lessons. And as you know, we recently reduced our indoor and outdoor water budget in response to the drought, and we adopted a new rate structure, which went into effect April 1. And the reason that this rate structure is so effective for our community, unlike the mandatory violations and those types of fine approach, is because our customers want to have the responsibility. They want the choice. And when you give them that opportunity, they react, and they act very well. And so, we see that in our community, this is a rate structure that people respond to. It's calculated, it's customized, so that you could still have your outdoor and still be efficient, and you can still have all the quality of life, but just use water efficiently. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan was part of our Prop 218 notice. It was adopted as an ordinance, but as part of our Prop 218 for the rate adoption, we put it all out there, so everyone could see exactly how it worked. So the Water Shortage Contingency Plan is implemented by the board member. It was adopted in February. We implemented it in May 1 of this year. And Stage 1 will go into effect June 1. Now, Stage 1, what you're required to do is to stay within your budget. There are no penalties at that point. We do not allow for pool refill adjustments. We also require areas that have recycled water, infrastructure, to use recycled water instead of portable irrigation. So really, at the residential level, there are no penalties. But the reason we phased it was to give our customers enough time to prepare themselves to look at their bill, understand their budget, call us if they have any questions, have us go out to your home if you want us to check things out. And we've sent out postcards on a weekly basis. We've done bill stuffers. We're going to do newsletters, put information on the website. That way, when June 1 and July 1 comes, there can't be anyone that says, "Well, I didn't know." And that's our objective, is to make sure that we do a complete canvassing to let the customers know what's coming. So July 1 is when the Stage 2 goes into effect. And at that point, you see that little graph there, if you exceed your budget, you go right into penalty. And that's pretty steep. And there are no bill adjustments. So if you have leaks, there are no bill adjustments. So what we encourage customers to do is to call us between now and July 1, get your questions answered, let us help you prepare for that day. And the reason we have to take these actions are because not only do we have to meet our 20%, but part of the regulation that the State Board adopted was they're going to look at how agencies react come June 1, which is the effective date of the regulation. If they see that you do nothing, they're going to have a hard time with that. And the Executive Director of the State Board has the authority to tell agencies and cities what levels of contingency plan you need to go to. So we're being proactive, we're being responsible, and again, if you're doing all the right things and you are being responsible, they are not going to target you. They're really going to look at agencies that are sort of non-compliant and not doing anything. The great thing about a water shortage contingency plan is sort of our approach to how we implement it, which is we target inefficient users first. So if you're an efficient user and you stay within your budget, your life, you're not going to see any change. If you're inefficient, you will see a big change. Also, as we escalate through the five stages of the contingency plan, we again, hit the inefficient users first, then we go into outdoor usage, and we incrementally cut that back. And at the most high stage of Stage 5, you see a slight reduction in indoor. So again, it's a very sort of methodical, pragmatic approach to reducing water usage. So here are just some samples of the material that we sent out, fact sheets, FAQs, bill stuffers, weekly postcards, and we're out there in community events, we're participating, we're talking to all of our residents and businesses, we're talking to the media, we're talking with OC Register, LA Times, NPR, Associated Press. We've been getting a lot of calls, which has been great, because it really sends out the message out there. We're looking to do some youth education programs, some partnerships. We found those to be very, very effective. And we have launched a outreach campaign, unlike anything that you've seen coming from Molten Niguel. So there's going to be a lot more coming your way, because again, it's really about customer communication, so that there is an understanding, and there's an opportunity to interact with our customers. And that's really important, because all the success, whether it's 20% or wherever we land, is really up to our customers. So last slide, going forward, we're going to do a lot more planning, and we're going to continue to engage with the state. You know, when the state looks at us, they see us as a model, and they've said so. And we're going to do the very best that we can to hit the 20% mark come nine months. But what the state has said publicly is for agencies such as ours, that have done so much, are doing a lot more than your, than other agencies. Even if we're not quite at 20, they're not going to start hitting us with fines. Again, you got to show that you're being responsible, you're being diligent. And if you're showing results along the way, that's really what they're looking for. Even the Governor, that's what he said, is that he really wants to use this as an opportunity to change the mindset. We're going to continue to work with all of you. Our customers want your feedback, ideas. We really need to figure out a new way of shifting behavior and changing the way that we think about water. Even though we talk about drought as an emergency, you know, when you turn on the tap, the water still comes out. So your daily awareness sometimes collapses. And this is the challenge, is that how do we keep that on your radar all day, every day? Because that's really the only way we're going to get through this. And again, this is the new reality going forward, so it's never going to change back. And we have to think about both short-term and long-term solutions, and we're looking at both fronts. We're not just looking at these next nine months, but really looking further out to see what is the most efficient way of providing the service to our community, so that we can continue to be healthy and thrive economically, and you can still enjoy quality of life and still be efficient. The other thing that we're doing, which we'll be happy to come back and talk separately about, is we're doing our part. And so, when you go by our office on La Paz, our grass is going brown. We stopped irrigating. It is recycled water, but even recycled water is precious water. And in our service area, we're seeing it almost running out, because when you have less indoor flow, then you have less recycled water. So we stopped irrigating, so you see the lawn going brown. It's okay, it won't die right away, so we're fine. And the other thing that we're doing is we have two separate locations, for those of you who are not aware of how we're sort of located. We have two separate places. We're going to consolidate into one on a property that we currently own, which is a large property that can accommodate all of our employees and all of our facilities. So we're doing that to, again, be efficient and really have a place where we can invite customers to come and talk about water issues and to have the forum. The place we have now, we don't have enough room, so it's always a challenge, and we have to go to other places. We want customers to come into our facility and look around and see and understand what we do, because again, without that, there can't be success. So that is our goal, and we look forward to coming back and giving you updates. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any questions from anyone on the?
Are there still financial incentives for turf removal?
That's a good question. So, I don't know if you've seen in the news, but Metropolitan Water District, which is the agency for Southern California that imports water from Northern California and Colorado, we are a retailer, our wholesaler is a member agency. They've had a program, turf removal program for quite some time, and Molten Niguel has contributed additional amount to the $2 that they offer. We put additional $1.50. They have been going gangbuster with turf removal requests, and they have burned through all of their monies that they allocated for that program. They added additional. They're up to about $300 million. Just in one week timeframe, they got $49 million worth of request. So because of the high volume, they have put a pause on the program, so they can evaluate the burn rate of the funds to support this program. All indications are the program will continue, but it may be modified to maybe put some caps or reduce here and there, just so that they can stretch the dollar as much as possible. So they will make a decision on May 26. They said, whatever decision they make on May 26 will take effect retroactively to May 12. So if your application is in queue prior to May 12, you should be fine, but after that, you will be subject to whatever new guidelines come out of Metropolitan. Our intention is to continue to add our supplemental, but again, until we know exactly what's happening, we're telling our customers. There will be a slight delay in processing, but again, we should have an answer on the 26, so it shouldn't be too long.
Which one? Okay.
Again, I thank you for the presentation, and it's very important that we all take this very seriously. And again, these materials that you gave us, I'm assuming the public can get by just dropping by the Water District. And you know, this is great information, but you kind of made a mention of leaks, and I've got to kind of run with that. It's kind of a sideline. The Molten Niguel Water District, the residents in those communities have an inordinately high number of slab leaks. Some, a couple in two years, I got a call from one of our constituents today on that. I had two slab leaks last year in a matter of weeks, and allegedly, this coincides with some change in the chemicals that you had put in to treat the water. And I know that there are some suits, so I know you can't comment, but you seem to be busy battling suits, and people do have these leaks, and that costs water and wastes water, because it takes a while to see that. And I'm just wondering why you guys wouldn't just, without admitting anything, just go back into the system you had before, before we had an inordinately high number of leaks in the Molten Niguel Water District community?
So I can talk a little bit about legal stuff, too, because there's parts of it that's public information. So yes, we have litigation, as do other agencies. Metropolitan is part of that as well. Again, they provide water to all of Southern California. The way that we receive and distribute water, all the water that we send to our customers are treated by Metropolitan. And so, there's been claims about how the water may cause these leaks, pinhole leaks. And what we tell customers is that we are only responsible up to the meter. We can only be, our authority don't go beyond that into your home, and we don't get to dictate how you plum your house, the type of material and the pipes that you use. And so, when we look at these types of suits, it typically comes from developments and clusters. And there's been a lot of, you know, people sort of think about what might be some other factors that cause those leaks. And again, those are all just sort of suggestions and thoughts. We don't know, there's no conclusive evidence. But we have to treat the water, and Metropolitan has to treat the water for public consumption. It has to be good for public health. We don't treat water for pipes. It's the building industry that have to accommodate the water quality level. So we're very confident in our stance, and that's why we're not backing down on that, because we have to do our job. As far as why don't we honor the leaks, typically, what happens in our experiences in the industry is people, again, it's an awareness thing. You don't really think about it until you get your bill or until you see it. And what we're trying to do with our Water Shortage Contingency Plan is to really try to close the gap on those types of water that is, could be caught. And again, there are tools, there are methods, and we can help customers go and read their meter and see how you can tell if you have a leak, if your toilet has a leak. We have tools and we have ways, and that's why we want the customers to call us, to so we can explain all that, and even go out to your house and do home audits to show you what you ought to be looking for. Because all, in the end, you know, we, I mentioned earlier that if we all do our part, that we should be fine, but ultimately, you are still looking at a $10,000 a day fine as an agency. And those get all passed through our customers. So that's why it's really important that everyone pays close attention and use us to help you.
Mayor Porter?
Thank you. I'm going to piggyback that, because that's exactly what I was going to ask you, is obviously, this city is somewhat known for its pin leaks and slab leaks, and a lot of water is wasted. My question is, I'm in HOA, and we've repiped, but a lot of people can't afford to repipe. And so, there's not much they can do. Is there anything the state is doing in regards to giving grants, saying, listen, because you're usually talking around $5,000 to repipe, you know, maybe offering grants, saying, "We'll give you half if you go ahead and get this repiped," so that way, it would reduce leaks coming out and wasted water?
They are not talking about that right now. They are thinking about incentives for appliances, technology, for turf removal. They have not talked about that. When you look at all parts of California, there are communities with truly aged internal piping in their homes and their apartments, and so, it's one of those areas that we really don't know just how bad it is, because again, we don't go into your home, onto your property to assess the condition of your pipes and your plumbing, so. But we have talked about that in the past, because there are certainly communities where water quality suffers because of those types of issues. But currently, with the conversations of the drought, that has not become into the mix. But you never know, again, if it is something that is felt throughout the state of California. Everything's up for discussion. The state is willing to look at different ideas and innovative approaches, and that's why we continue to stay engaged and hear back from our customers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Miniger?
Yes, I've got two questions. The first one is, has it been independently audited with regard to your rate structures? When I look at, when I talk to the council members of City of San Juan Capistrano, as you well know, they lost a lawsuit, and they spent tons of money. So to what extent you're confident, as the GM for the Molten Niguel Water District, that you come into us and you're saying that everything's in good hands?
I could-
Because I don't want to see the rates to be increased because of the potential future litigations.
I could not be more confident. I am absolutely confident, because when we were doing this whole rate study, San Juan Capistrano case was happening. So we paid very close attention. We brought in legal guidance from day one, and every lock and step of the way, we had legal input and guidance. We assembled a very strong team of experts internally, externally, and we made sure we had legal guidance. All the issues that came out of San Juan Capistrano, all those issues, we avoided completely. So again, when you think back to the San Juan rate case, the court specifically said, "There's nothing wrong with tiered rate structure or budget-based rate structure." But by Prop 218, whatever rate structure you have, whatever rates you charge, you must tie it back to a justification, to a cost of delivering that service. Because as public agency, we don't get to make profit. So we have to always show all of our work. And part of the issue with San Juan Capistrano is that they did not show their work. And when they did their cost of service study, typically, we do a lot of fancy analysis and charts and graphs. Well, if a layperson picked it up, they can't understand it. There's no value in that, because we answer to our customers. We wrote our cost of service study in a way that anyone can pick it up and understand it. We even sent out to reporters, no questions, because it's so easy to understand. We laid it out as a narrative. We told a story that explained why and how we set our rate structures, and how do we go about actually designing the dollars and cents behind our rates. So we learned a valuable lesson over the years, our experience, other agency, the San Juan Capistrano. And there have been a lot of other cases besides San Juan. It just received a lot of attention, but there's been other cases. And so, again, the takeaway is, we all can stand to improve. The rate structure that the district has adopted is very solid. We made sure that it was solid, and we've had lots of different reviews, and a lot of different attorneys take a look at it, so we feel very solid about that.
And my second question is, I talked to my friends at the City Council in Newport Beach, and they told me that they're contemplating to impose penalties, specific penalties, for the people that would be using their pools. Now, my question for you is, to what extent are you trying to come up with your penalty structure? And what's the maximum?
So our penalty, it's $7.43 on top of- So our penalty, it's $7.43 on top of our Tier 2, which is your outdoor. So the total cost, just to explain it simply, if you exceed your budget, you're going to pay $9.04 per unit of water, which is 748 gallons. So it jumps, because our Tier 1 is $1.41, Tier 2 is $1.61. And it's very affordable if you check the prices in, in Orange County. But if you exceed your budget, it jumps to a penalty.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a comment, Ms. Lopez. About a year ago, I took out my grass in my backyard, and had a representative from Molten Niguel Water District come out with a state measure. And it was a very efficient process, and I, I got my rebate, both from you and, I guess, Metropolitan. And it was a great, you know, great thing to do. It didn't pay for what I had to replace it with, but I'm now, when I attended the event on Saturday, which was a great event, there are some vendors out there selling artificial grass. And that's starting to interest me a lot for my front yard. And it's really good-looking stuff, and it's a little expensive, but in the long run, I think it'd be the way to go. And so it was, it was a good event, and you had a lot of people there and a lot of things going on. And I think if you can do that in the future again, it would be really well. We had a little problem, we were putting balloons out in front with, with Live, what is it? Live Smart or something? And I was tying up the L in itself, I think it's still on the top of the, of the community room. I lost the L. And so it's I've Smart now.
Luckily, we had a backup L.
You had a backup L, okay. Well, it went to L, I'll tell you that. At any rate, thank you very much for your presentation. And just make sure everybody keeps aware of the fact that we've got to save water. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our presentations. And to bring us to public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council on any matter, whether or not it appears on this agenda, is required to complete a gold-colored request-to-speak form, looks like this, and give it to the city clerk prior to being heard by the City Council. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. And I have one request to speak under general communications. And the people who wish to speak under the agenda item later on will have their opportunity when that item is, is called. The only admonition I would have is, if it's, if you're just piling on the same information, I would appreciate it if you'd make it short. So at any rate, I have, I want to close the public communication, excuse me. I don't want to close the public. I want to call up Brad Fowler. And you have a just, a general communication.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brad Fowler. I'm resident of Irvine, but I'm representing the City of Dana Point tonight as their Public Works Director. I have given you a handout up there, which is, talks about our trolley that we're beginning for the City of Dana Point, and I just wanted to come talk to you about it a little bit as we embark on a new transit program in your neighboring city running up and down Pacific Coast Highway. We will begin a Friday, Saturday, Sunday coastal trolley service on Pacific Coast Highway on June 26th, after school's out this year. And it runs through Labor Day, September 7th. This year limits the shuttle to weekend-only service, with hopes that this year's success will support a summer-long, seven-day-a-week service next summer. The trolley runs from Capo County Beach and up to the Ritz-Carlton, and connects there along with the Laguna Beach Trolley. So you can run up and down the coast for both of our cities. We stop at major hotels, the Lantern District, Strand Beach, the Harbor, Doheny State Beach, Coast Highway Timeshares, and Doheny Village, among other locations. I, this is what our sign will look like for our bus stops, nice and colorful, and you won't miss them. We have trolleys that, for the first year, are going to look like woodies. They're wrapped shuttles. Our hope is that once we go for next year, if we're successful, the contractor will actually buy trolleys, and we'll have open-air travel up and down the coast. We don't have a schedule. We have four trolleys to keep the headway down to 12 to 15 minutes, so it should come quickly. We have a, an application that you can get at DP Trolley, which will allow you on your phone to determine how long it will take for the trolley to get there. And you can actually walk, watch on the map as the trolley proceeds to your location. We are going Fridays from 12 noon to 10:00 PM, Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sundays from 10:00 to 8:00 PM. And all the vehicles are powered by alternative fuels. They're handicapped accessible and have bike racks. So you can go to the city's website in Dana Point and find out more information, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. This is a free service, I think?
It is.
Okay, and so you, it'll take, how long does a trip take? If you, if you were to get on in the beginning and go to the end, how long would that take?
Well, I think you can stay on if you go up the coast and down the coast, probably for nearly an hour. But again, if you take the location, you'll only have to wait 12 to 15 minutes at the worst case to get on the trolley. And probably, if you're going one direction, you're there in, in just as long as it would take you to get there in a car. So up and down from Palisades to the Ritz, one direction is probably only about 20 minutes.
Oh, can I take my surfboard?
You know, we're going to watch a little bit about surfboards with the indoor shuttle this time. We're, we're thinking about that. Laguna doesn't have a surfboard on it, so, and they have some problems with some of the surfers. So not sure if we're going to do that just yet. We're going to wait for community feedback, and we'd be happy to get yours, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you have a comment? Go ahead, Ms.
We had talked about this at the OCTA meeting, that Dan Fox and I had gone to, and something we'd be interested in, in seeing how this goes, is eventually perhaps having a trolley that goes to the MetroLink, so people could take the MetroLink train down here, and then take it down to Crown Valley, all the way to PCH, and then kind of be able to connect to either Laguna Beach or the Dana Point Trolley. So hopefully, we might be able to have a merge there in a year or two.
Well, that'd be great. You know, they're, they're coming out with a call for projects, for Project V, which is this service that you may want to invest in. I know that San Juan Capistrano and San Clemente are also looking at it. And we're all hoping to hook together, because I think, you know, rising tides lifts all ships, and if we're all in on this together, I think all our communities benefit.
Yeah, I believe they've got a grant that we're going to be looking into applying for, for 2016. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, that ends our public comments. Now I'd like to move on to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull anything on the consent calendar? May I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 5 on the consent calendar.
A second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're going to move on to community development, the South County Courthouse Site Development Concept and Initiation of General Plan Amendment Zone Change. And Mr. Fox, you're going to tee this up?
Yes, good evening, Mayor McCloskey, and members of the City Council. At your February 17th meeting, the City Council heard a presentation by Lab Holding and Griffin Realty about their vision for the former county courthouse site that sits right behind us. It really envisions a, kind of an upscale, walkable, true downtown type of environment that has a number of restaurants, retail. It has a variety of personal services, along with office, event space, as well as outdoor opportunities and indoor opportunities for cultural arts and activities of a variety of, of sources. It also has a residential component that includes up to 200 dwelling units. At that meeting, the council kind of deferred taking action on initiating the general plan, amendment, and zone change necessary to accommodate the residential component of the project, and asked the developer to kind of share the information with the community, you know, over the next couple of months, and to at least get some more information out there of what the vision for the property might be. That has been done. There were a total of three events that have occurred since the year of February meeting. The Laguna Niguel Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee hosted a session in April. There were probably about at least 80 people in attendance. It was a very well-attended Government Affairs Committee meeting. The Laguna Niguel Women's Club has helped sponsor a event here at City Hall on May 4th. We probably had, oh, we're estimating about 250 people here, both in this room, the lobby, and overflow into the community room. It's been broadcast on our cable channel. The information has also been made available on our website. And there was also a presentation made to the Laguna Niguel Rotary Club on May 5th, where you had probably about 40 people in attendance for that lunch program. I just want to reiterate that the action that, that is being asked of you this evening to initiate a general plan amendment and zone change really is just to start the process. No decision, no commitment is being made or being asked of the City Council. It really is just to start the process. The county has asked for the City Council and the city to be the applicant on the general plan and zoning. And then, once that is processed, then the applicant would then come back and/or concurrently work on the site-specific development plans that reflect the vision that's in the exhibits that you have all seen in the previous PowerPoint presentations. So we're back to the council this evening to ask you to initiate the general plan amendment and zone change. As part of that, we're asking for, in, in concept, to consider funding the necessary environmental review part of that application process. We anticipate that that could be approximately $150,000. We're not asking for a commitment of funds this evening. We would have to go through a request for proposal to select an environmental consultant that would evaluate the project. We would come back at a subsequent meeting when, when that is ready to be selected. And at that time, we would be able to ask the council for specific authorization to fund that portion of the project. We do have representatives from the county and the development team here in the audience this evening, if there are any other questions. With that, again, staff is recommending that the City Council initiate the process to amend the general plan for this Agora project. We want to make sure it's very clear, we, you know, we're, we're doing it for this project that has been shown to the community, and it, so we can start the process. It will come back to the Planning Commission for public hearings. It will come back to the City Council for public hearings for a final action, and that could take six to nine months. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to have the public comments. So I want to start calling up members of the public, Michael Curtis.
Good evening. Over the past 31 years-
Did you say your, your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Michael Curtis, Laguna Niguel, California. 29821, store it all circle.
Got it.
Okay. Over the 31 years of my residency in Laguna Niguel, I've come to realize I'm a man of few words. So I'll just keep it real short for the council members and mayor and the minute recorder. I believe the land is fine just the way it is. So I just recommend leave it, just leave it be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Dr. Jim Saitz, I'm sorry. Dr. Saitz.
Just a brief summary.
Could you give your name?
Dr. Jim Saitz, 30352 via Corona, Laguna Niguel.
Thank you.
I was in Irvine for 14 years during its initial development. Participated in a lot of things that happened in Irvine. I learned a lot. I was a principal in the Capistrano Unified School District, starting in 1976, for a few years before I went into business. And we moved to Laguna Niguel in 1985. Since that time, have had an opportunity to see the growth of Orange County, all the things going on, plus my little experience at Disneyland and the way things can happen in the happiest kingdom. But I think most of all, having raised three children here in this community, to the schools, to the development, and everything else, I am strongly in favor of the Agora project. I think it represents a good move forward for this community. I've had the opportunity, not only for that, but I've lived in Carmel three times. I lived in Beverly Hills once, and in La Jolla once. So I've experienced, some experience in these various communities when I was in business. And one of the things that I was always impressed with is the way of their community development, the camaraderie, the socialization, the communication between the people. And having been in Laguna Niguel for, what, 30 years now? I have a pretty good feel for what's been going on around here, even though I'm not directly involved myself in any of those activities. I think that the project gives us the opportunity to have a true community. I went over and I visited the YMCA, hadn't been there for a long time. I was very impressed. We look at the library, I was very impressed. But a civic center where people can interact, walk to, communication, all of these other things, along with our educational system that we have here, could greatly enhance the overall aspect of what Laguna Niguel really is. We're not a fragmented community, we're unified. And I think it would give us a real opportunity to show that this community has every aspect that any of the others in South Orange County. And I've had businesses in San Juan Capistrano, San Clemente, Dana Point, and other areas in my individual business, so I'm pretty familiar with all of the South Orange County. And I think it would be a great opportunity for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the name starts with an H, and the last name is an S. There we go.
Helen Sarice.
Sarice?
My write, my writing isn't the best, I guess. Yeah. I'm here to ask the council to please vote against the housing, the high-density housing. In 1961, my husband and I built an apartment house in Long Beach. From that, we went into other residential, commercial, industrial, and shopping centers. High density isn't the best thing to have in this community. We, we've been here for 15 years. We're very close to this area, just up the hill. And I really hope that you vote against the high density. If you look around, they're putting things on cabbet. There's hardly no space for, if they, if you have to widen the road or additional parking and things. That's not the way I ever envisioned Laguna Niguel. When Huntington Beach changed their zoning to have high density on, on Edinger, Beach Boulevard, Golden West, and so on, we had property right there, and we sold it, fortunately. Because now, when I go there, all I, well, in fact, they, they had problems. They had, they voted to originally have hundreds of apartments. Now they're trying to retract and close that down and, and cut the apartments down. People were up in arms at several meetings. They don't want the high density. It's caused pollution, it's causing traffic problems. And, you know, here we have a lady come up here and talk about the water shortage for 45 minutes, and we want more residential, high-density? I think it's wrong. And I hope you people can take into account that Laguna Niguel is going to change completely with the way it's being handled today. People moved here because it was a very safe, nice area. And look at the, look at the register blotter. There's a lot of crime. And where are the crimes? It's right around where the apartments are, mostly. And I, I just hope that you people can look at things the way some of the residents look at it, and don't vote for, let them. I, I think the thing should be developed, maybe a courthouse, maybe a big park area.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
Maybe an Agora area, which Agora is- maybe a big park area, maybe an Agora area, which Agora is a word from Greek, which means a central area for villages. I've been there many times, and it doesn't have high-density apartments. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Alpert.
Good evening, Councilwoman McCloskey, and fellow council members. I'm here in support of the project. The previous person who spoke, I think, is a little misguided in the way she's looking at this project. We need a gathering place. We need a place that we can get together, and a downtown, which is what this project is offering us. And I was just brought, something that was brought back to me today, 60 years ago, when we were negotiating this property with the county, they were in process of building a super courthouse here. It got all the way to, almost the building permit, and it's on the shelves now, and it's dusty, that if this project does not go through, we're going to get a courthouse with a probation office, with a holding tank for criminals? Is that what we want here? No. I really support you in supporting this project and moving it forward for the EIR and the general plan amendment and zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Benjamin Braun.
Benjamin Braun, 23872, Wavestreet Circle, Laguna Nigal, 20-year resident. It's almost, it could be humorous, if not this being such a critical decision to be made, that the politics of planning are at work here, asking you to just approve something, but it doesn't really mean anything, and later on, we'll review this, and this, that, and the next thing will be, no problem, just approve this so we can go on to the next step. You know, if you look on the Laguna Nigal website, the Crown Apartments that are on cabbet are 284 units. Those are four stories of residential, over three levels of parking, for a total of seven stories. That is a fact. That was approved by the council in 2012. What we're talking about here are only 84 units less than what is built out there. And with the inability to see a site plan that has some scale to it, from what we've limitedly been shown, this project, in order to achieve 200 units, would at least be that big, if not higher, in order to have a smaller site footprint than what is built out there at cabbet. The last time the county tried to give us something, they wanted us to build El Toro Airport. They said it was a done deal. Now, this time, the county wants the city to revise their general plan to allow this project. The city must rethink the impact and the reality of the viability of this project. Look around, the commercial areas around town center, we see many vacant stores for rent and for sale. The 24-hour gym at Vons went bust about three years ago, and it's still empty. What the footprint and the height being proposed is being hidden from us, and we want to know so that we can make an educated direction as a community, and know what we're getting ourselves into. This is an extremely important motion that you're about to make, and this is a gift of a horse that we need to look very closely in its mouth at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Alsop.
Hi, I'm Melissa Alsop at 24736 Kings Road, Laguna Nigal. I'm a 14-year resident of Laguna Nigal, I'm in support of the Agora project. I spent time this weekend at the Packing District. I hope some of you have seen that facility. It was a lot of fun, and the food was really great, and it seemed like a lot of people were walking from the neighborhood to come and use it, and I think that Laguna Nigal needs a place like that. Not in favor of apartments, but I'm okay accepting that as a contingency with this development because of the way that the county is having the land being leased instead of being purchased by a developer. I understand that there are some concessions that have to be made. I don't want a jail. I have been to the Newport Court Facility, and I don't like the people that hang out there, and I don't want them coming to Laguna Nigal either, and I hope that you can all see that that would be a travesty to have a facility like that, or a facility with another grocery store and a CVS that we don't need with 400 or 500 more apartments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Paul Willens.
Mayor McCloskey, members of the council. My name is Paul Willens, and resident of Laguna Nigal. There's a couple of issues that I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. At the committee meeting held of May 4th, the county's representative indicated that under the, I better get my glasses on. Unless we adopt the proposed Agora project, the county will consider of building a courthouse with an adjacent jail facility and sheriff's station under 22 acres. Members of the council, I propose to nullify the failed threat that our county, that our city, when necessary, and without hesitation, will amend the general plan in declaring the 22 acres open space. By removing, in principle, the courthouse option, council is now in a position to negotiate the Agora project from a position of strength rather than weakness. To that end, I'm asking council to adopt full disclosure by asking staff to analyze the following items. Require a detailed economic analysis by independent accounting office, starting with the county's income requirement, followed by the developer's income proposal from the various venues. Second, clarify the upscale project by indicating in detail the retail and office clientele and type of restaurants. Third, disclose type of retail merchandise and pricing structure. Fourth, disclose menu items and menu prices. Initiate a comparative study of the upscale aspects with the Anaheim and Costa Mesa projects.
Yeah, 30 seconds.
In conclusion, I'm asking council to comment tonight on my open space proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Robert Ming.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thanks for having me tonight. A few years back, my wife and I used to watch a show on TV called 24. Kiefer Sutherland would every week have 24 Hours to Save the World, and every episode, he'd have to choose either between saving the president or letting a nuclear bomb go off, or letting his wife die or his daughter die. And that's the kind of situation you're in tonight, because the county's put you there. They're telling you that you either get a jail or you get a beautiful project. Well, I'm here to say that that's not a real choice, and that's not really what's happening tonight either, because the county doesn't want to go from a $27 million positive transaction to a $27 or $50 million negative transaction that's going to cost them money. They've already got a jail project going on in Irvine. It's not a real threat. More importantly, even if you approve the change tonight, the only thing that you're guaranteeing, you're not choosing between a beautiful project and a jail. What you're doing is making a zoning change, and what you will guarantee tonight is not that that project will get built. It may get built, but there's lots of hurdles between now and then. It will guarantee that every future proposal will always have housing in it if you change the housing rule tonight. And that's something that this council has repeatedly rejected. The county puts a lot of weight on the ULI report, and that ULI report was soundly rejected by this council when it came out, and it was because the people have repeatedly said they don't want housing in that location. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that I have spoken personally with members of the Board of Supervisors and their staff, and the policy that they are currently operating under of leasing and not selling, I believe would fail if it went back to the Board of Supervisors today, based on the new members of that board. That means that you have choices. That means that you could make an offer to purchase this property and sell most of it to these developers to develop this beautiful project, retain the piece that now is slated for apartments, and make it into a boutique conference room hotel instead. I spoke today with a developer and operator of hotels who would be very interested in pursuing that opportunity. There are other possibilities, as long as you don't let this decision be dictated by fear. And that's what I'm afraid of, is that tonight, that you're going to end up making a choice because you feel like you're being forced to, because you're being bullied into having either a jail or a beautiful project, and that's not the only realm of possibility. So, I would encourage you to keep the options open and not make a decision tonight that you'll regret in future years, especially if this project doesn't actually get built. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the public comments portion of this program, and I want to go on to the comments from the council. There is a recommendation, I'll just read what the recommendation is. Provide direction, and if deemed appropriate, initiate the preparation of a general plan amendment and zone change necessary for the Agora development project, and provide direction, and if deemed appropriate, support in concept, funding the necessary environmental documentation for the project, subject to separate city council approval of an environmental consultant and appropriation of funds. So, I'd like to open up for comments, and who wants to start the comments? Anybody have comments?
I do have comments.
Mr. Miniger, go ahead.
All right. I'm going to tee off. Well, I reviewed the entire document from a potential adverse impact of the proposed action plan. When I looked at the numbers, now I'm speaking as a registered engineer in the great state of California, and I looked at the housing element of the proposed action plan by the county of Orange. When we take the maximum number of units in the equation, under the worst-case scenario, the proposed project would be generating about 34 vehicles per hour coming in, and 100 vehicles per hour to leave the project site. Now, I looked at the proposed master plan, and I realized that we do have one signalized intersection, which happens to be Crown Valley Parkway at the entrance to the Civic Complex, and then, the project architect is proposing for three driveways. Therefore, the numbers that I mentioned, from strictly traffic distribution perspective, is going to be spread out over the system. Therefore, as a registered engineer, licensed engineer to practice in this state and a bunch of other states, I do not see any impact with regard to traffic that would trigger my decision with respect to that aspect of the project. Obviously, we know that at this juncture, we are not making a determination on other things about the project. We are just deliberating that if we should move forward by initiating the process for the zone change, and also for the approval so that the city staff can start the environmental process, because this project's going to fall under the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, from a legal perspective, the county, as an organization, has to go through that process. So, I'm not looking at this project, having said that, spending time to analyze the numbers, I'm not looking at the proposed action plan from that perspective, because the project's going to have sufficient number of driveways on Pacific Island Drive 2, and one on Alicia Parkway, and obviously, the major entrance is going to be at the signalized intersection that happens to be in front of the city hall. So, that kind of impact is not my concern, and I should add, when we did the Gateway Project, I sat down with Assistant City Manager at the time, Director of Community Development, and Mr. Jeff Gibson, at the time, Planning Manager, and I looked at all the computer models that the city has developed, and I brought in my expertise to look at potential adverse impact of this project. Therefore, again, I do not see those elements as precluding me from moving ahead with a decision that I'm going to be making now. I don't want to give a speech, but rather, I want to just go over those specific elements of this. I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Mayor from the county, if possible, that he can clarify those questions for me.
Sure.
What's going to happen after 20 years? When, I mean, I wish all the best for the project development team, but what's going to happen 20 years from now?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Scott Mayer, on behalf of the county of Orange.
20 years from now, what's going to happen with regard to the lease arrangement between the county and the developer?
Mr. Miniger, the county will negotiate a long-term lease with the developer, which will exceed 20 years.
I recognize that. I'm using 20 as a threshold. What's going to happen? Who's going to take charge if something goes wrong with regard to the project development team?
Well, the developer will be formally responsible for the project, with a backstop from their construction lender and their provider of the equity element to the project.
Okay. The share of the city's revenue for the project, I've seen projections from your office that is roughly about $500,000 a year, correct?
Are you talking about the city's portion of the sales tax?
And from the property.
Property tax. Well, those actual numbers will be determined once the taxable value and the taxable sales have been determined with respect to the project, and at this time, we don't have those figures.
So, it's a hypothetical number that was given to me?
Hypothetical number, yes, based on assumptions.
Okay. And I don't have any more questions from the county. I do have a question for our city attorney. I just wanted to make sure that you confirm for me my understanding that the given situation for us is for the city council just to take action with regard to proceed with the proposed initiation of general plan amendment and the zoning changes.
Yeah, members of the council, Mr. Miniger, Councilmember Miniger, yes, in fact, that's correct. All you're doing tonight is starting the process, initiating Planning Commission action to review and analyze and make recommendations to the council. You're making no binding decisions tonight.
Are we, as a city council, would have the power down the pike in conjunction and collaboration and cooperation of our planning commissioners, or planning commission as a whole, that down the pike, we can reduce the number of housing units?
Well, it would be up to the planning commission to make a recommendation as to the project. The project includes 200 housing units, as I understand it. It very well could be that the planning commission might recommend something different, and the council could act on that. Now, how that would relate to the negotiations between the county and the prospective developer, I don't know, but the ultimate decision on number of housing units is ultimately for the council.
Because the planning commission, I mean, as a former planning commissioner and planning commission chairman, I understand the process. It's going to be based on the traffic impact study, based on the assessment of the impacts, environmental, air quality, noise, you know, you name it, hydrology, on and on and on. And then, based on that, then the city staff's going to make a recommendation to the planning commission, as the planning body of this great city, then their decision's going to be basically presented to- Then, their decision's going to be basically presented to us if there is no appeal, correct?
No. They only make recommendations as to a general plan amendment and zone change. There would be no appeal. It would automatically come from the Planning Commission to the council for final action on general plan amendments and zone changes.
The reason that I'm focusing on that is I've seen other projects that the city council basically takes over because the projects happen to be very critical to the communities. Can we, as a council, do that? Because this is a very critical, important project to all of us and to the citizens of this great city. I want to make sure that we can be more involved than just the Planning Commission that would be reviewing those reports. And based on the city staff's recommendation, then they're going to be refining, you know, and finalizing the decision there.
Well, again, the Planning Commission has the responsibility, in the first instance, of reviewing the proposed environmental impact report.
No, I recognize that, Mr. Attorney. I recognize that. I know the process. My question is, I'm moving beyond that. As Dan said, eight to nine months from now.
Correct.
If this project, if this proposed action plan would move forward, we are going to see the final reports.
Absolutely.
And knowing the government, we don't want to be the showstoppers. As the government body, I hate to see that we create more red tapes if this project is set to go. So we want to just cut, you know what I mean, bureaucracy in the government. And I'm one of those people that would advocate it. So having said that, then the Planning Commission is going to be making those determinations. We cannot, at this juncture, we cannot add our, how can I say, our involvement in the process, which is a special situation in any municipal corporation in California. It's not common. Because I go to a lot of cities myself, I understand the process. It's not common. But can we do that? Because this project is a unique project for the future of the city.
Well, the way the planning laws are set up in this state, the determination on a project like this at the general plan and zoning code level is the Planning Commission's responsibility. It's up to the Planning Commission to make the decisions, the determinations, subject to then making a recommendation to the city council. The city council can certainly watch the process, get copies of documents, read documents, follow everything. But it's the Planning Commission to make that recommendation. But again, once the Planning Commission makes that recommendation, then the city council takes over, and it can completely disagree with the Planning Commission.
So to have 200 units or to have less units would be the sole discretion of the Planning Commission of the city. And then, that decision, in conjunction with other elements of the project as a package, then would come to us to make the final determination on the project.
It would be their, I hate to use the term "sole", but it would certainly be used, their discretion as to what they recommend to you with you, the council, having the sole ultimate discretion.
Sure, sure. I understand that. Very good. Now, I do like the theme of the project. We never had anything like this. I had to take my kids to the town center of Aliso Viejo. I had to take them to Dana Point. I had to take them to Long Beach, I mean Laguna Beach. For so many years, for almost 20-some years, I always wanted to see a central place for this beautiful city. We never had it. We never had any sense of a vibrant downtown. And this project, with the elements that I see on the plans, it does provide that. So at this juncture, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to be taking the time of my fellow colleagues. I just want to stop here, and then I want to, you know, hear
Thank you very much.
what they say.
Okay. Any other comments here? Ms. Genoway?
Well, I think during this whole process, the information has changed, or at least we have more information. In February, I believe that this came to the council very prematurely, before we knew exactly what the project was and had a chance to get more information. And I know I'm not going to approve anything unless I have adequate information to make that decision. So now, with the presentations that have been made and, you know, through these last couple of months, we know what it is. And I think this project will be good for Laguna Niguel. And our residents, who were previously opposed to it, have had the opportunity to see the project, and they have overwhelmingly shown their favor for it, that they would like to have this. I think the project will provide a gathering place. I know my children went to Aliso Viejo Town Center, too, because there was not a gathering place in our city. So provide that for the residents, and also a destination for the outer towners, because we want to bring people into our city to support our businesses. The concern that I have, and for me, what was the sticking point, and I still have concern about, though, is the residential component. And ideally, I'd like to see a hotel, and I know you know that. But, and maybe as you're working things out, maybe a hotel will come forward. And also, or if it does end up being residential, if we could reduce the number of residences, because that is a great concern to our city and our residents. For the zoning, we have that Section C on our maps here. I'd like to see if we can carve out or subdivide a certain area where the apartments or where the hotel or residential would be so that the whole Section C would not be subject to residential zoning. But just a small portion of that, and then make it with the qualification that this is for the Agora project as currently presented. Not that it's going to change. We don't want a project that's named Agora but be something significantly different than what we've seen. And as far as the environmental impact report, I do have concerns about the taxpayers paying for that. So if it's something that needs to be done, I would like to see maybe those costs picked up during final approval from either the developer or the county. But I am concerned about the taxpayers of our city paying for that report, where developers usually do. But I am in favor of it. I think it'll be good for our city.
Ms. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. I know we had a letter that was given to us by the county in regards to the project. And basically, the last paragraph says, "In order for the county and Agora to move forward with this project, the city must approve, initiate the, sorry, process for the property, including 200 residential units and the related environmental assessment on May 19, 2015. The failure of such an approval by the city council will require staff to bring the project back to our board for reconsideration and further appropriate actions." Could you go more into detail of what you think appropriate actions would be?
Ma'am, I can't speak for the board, but what the board, actually, the Real Estate Subcommittee, the two members who signed that letter, Chairman Spitzer and Supervisor Nelson, what they were trying to convey was the intent of the overall board back when this project was approved and the developer was selected back in November of last year. And they just wanted to, again, clarify their position with respect to the project and the request of the board, that the project be allowed to move forward with up to 200 residential units.
In regards to Mr. Ming's comments, is that an option for us to actually purchase the land and then basically sell it back to the different developers so that we would actually have control of what's going to be developed? And I guess for the city manager as well, is that something that's actually feasible that we could do as a city financially?
The option that we have, that the county has presented to your city council, is the Agora project and the request to have the property rezoned for up to 200 residential units. That is the only option that is before you for consideration. That's the only option that our board has approved.
Thank you very much. I definitely think, I mean, this is, I like the project. This is, you know, Laguna Niguel, one thing we've always missed is a place to interact, to have a true downtown center. And by looking at the developer and the different projects he's done, he's been very successful for it. I do have a couple points that I wanted to make on there is, and I think one of the number ones is, again, we're clarifying that this would be to go ahead and move forward on the environmental and traffic study. It would be brought back to this board for final decision. With that said, I've stated in the past that I don't like the taxpayers having to pay that environmental fee of estimated $150,000. The county property, this is county property, and I think that they should cover the expenses. To show that we do have stake in the game, I recommend the following. The city and the county split the cost-making at $75,000 or whatever it may be, with the understanding that when the project is developed, the county will then pay back the $75,000 to the city. The payback would occur two years after the completion. Also, this application would only be valid if the county is able to make a financial deal with Agora and no other developer. As the applicant holder, we are able to withdraw our application at any time if we feel it does not benefit the city. Thank you.
Ms. Member, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. I know it's a lot of time put in, and the developer, Shane Ciggy, for being here and all your work. I don't want to get too redundant on some of the other council member stuff, but just how we got here, just a little bit, in my opinion, was not the best path. That's, nobody asked us, you know, this is county land. Everybody really needs to understand that, that while it's right here in the middle of our city, we do not own that land. We bought this property that we're sitting on, this four acres in 2006, I believe, from the county. And it's their land, and we do not have control. It's county-driven. It's very important. There's been a lot of comments, surveys, emails that have come in that says, you know, there's been no community survey. Well, that is because the county did not do a community survey of our residents to see what we wanted here. And again, that's on the county. That's not on this council or any previous councils. Just want to make sure that's really cool, clear. I mean, early on in the onset of this project, some developers decided on their own, as it's their right, to go through various chambers and various entities to say, "These are some proposals that we'd like to do here on this land." They didn't have county approval. They didn't have city approval. And I know a number of residents got pretty excited about different projects, such as community theaters, art centers, and things like that. Those were not approved by the county, nor by the city, nor pushed by either entity. But I think a lot of people created some confusion out there as to how things went. The county, when they did start taking this project seriously, did include some city staff. And perhaps our previous mayor had a tiny bit of input on a county review board in terms of the projects that were submitted, which I believe there were four. But mostly, the decision on the Agora project was decided without us as a city ruling body. And so this is county-driven. They did come to us, as our council member has pointed out, that in February, with not a lot of information to all of us here sitting, nor our residents, and said, "Here, just approve this thing." And lately, I will admit, as former Mayor Ming said, you know, that there's been a little bit of forcefulness. You know, letters like this, that Mayor Protem Davies pointed out, do seem a little or a lot like bullying. I mean, there's no other thing here, Mr. Mayor, other than this, it comes across, you know, you must, you know, words like "must approve", you know, that's, really, we would hope that you would approve would be a little bit more of a cooperative effort between the county and the city. That I would admonish you to take back to your supervisors and your staff, and tell them that we don't really appreciate that. That really doesn't come across at all as trying to be a good neighbor. And we had meetings, some of the council members had meetings with your staff, asking for various things. Can we buy the land? Can we reduce the number of housing? From February to today, this project, from the county's viewpoint, has not budged one iota. So again, for the residents to know this, there has been no flexibility on the part of the county. There has been a number of threats in terms of what this possibly could become. A courthouse, a jail, a lot for their trucks as they do different projects around here. You know, that wasn't really appreciated either. But those are real threats that could really happen. Our former mayor, again, says, "Take a chance, roll the dice." They're bluffing. You know, I don't know if they are or not. But at the same time, I think that we can, as a body, and some of these ideas have come forth already through my fellow council members, make some qualifications to this and move forward. And again, there was another member of the public that said, "Yeah, we're not going to do anything." But yeah, this is called progress. We do move things along, and that's how things get done, is to move projects a little bit at a time. So now, where we are today is this proposal for a downtown Laguna Niguel. Well, that is a desired project. We've talked about that. I talked about that in my campaign. I think some of my fellow council members and some of the newer members talked about that as well, that we want a desired downtown Laguna Niguel. Housing came with it. I wish that there wasn't a housing element here at this particular location. But I don't think this is high-density housing either. As I understand it, that's on a three- or four-acre parcel of the 22 acres available. It's not at all to be compared to the project that's down there on Cabot. This is not going to be a high-density project. What we're approving today is to go forward with a traffic study and environmental report, and that's going to differentiate. And again, I appreciate Councilmember Minigar coming forth with his expertise, and he is a traffic expert. I mean, we have, sitting here, one of the best traffic engineers in the state to give his views, and I appreciate that. Parking is, I don't think, going to be a problem. I know that there's people concerned about the parking on some of the projects up on Pacific Island. Another thing that's come through is what about the schools? I believe that this development's going to be quite a bit different than many of the other developments that are already here in older part of Laguna Niguel in the fact that I think that this is going to be a little bit more higher-end, a little bit more costly. It's going to be more millennials or boomers that have already had children out of the house. As far as keeping it as dirt, which a couple people have said, I think there were two people who said, "Leave it as it is." Unfortunately, as life happens, it's full of change. I don't think that's going to happen. Whether we approve this project or don't approve this project, something will happen. It's great to say, you know, "Hey, now that I'm here, let's close the door to progress." I don't think that's going to happen at all. As far as our businesses, I think we have a 98% occupancy for Laguna Niguel for business. I think that whatever we put in there, and looking at the developers, other projects around, I think it's going to be a very, very successful operation. I believe that they'll be able to fill it. I believe it'll help our community. I wish that there was going to be a community center there. But the developers assured us that there will be a stage, both indoor and outdoor, for use, for our community to use. I think that might be the best we can have. I don't think we're making this decision out of fear, even though I think we got here a little bit on a bullied basis, which I'm not very happy about. I do think that we can make very clear, as we look at this, what we're supposed to approve tonight, which is provide direction, if deemed appropriate, and initiate preparation of general plan amendment, zone change is necessary for the Agora Development Project, and provide direction, if deemed appropriate, in support of the concept funding for the environmental documentation. To Councilmember Minigar's point and Councilmember Genoway's point, I think we can say that this will be for the Agora project as shown, which we have a number of ideas specifically. I think that'll address some of the former mayor's points when he spoke, that this deal will be off the table if that project does not go through. We'll go right back to how it's zoned currently, which is for government use, correct? Community commercial use. So we can make that contingent. I think we could put a 200-unit cap. So while Planning Commission can make their decision, I think the county will know that this deal will be off the table if they decide to go at 201 units or greater. And that that will be off. I also believe in the payback. I think that the costs should be 50/50 split in terms of these reports, with a cap for the city of Laguna Niguel at $75,000, because this was their number of approximately $150,000. So we cap it at 75. We split that. Any additional costs are covered by the county. I like the payback concept as well, that after two years, I believe, was your I like the payback concept as well, that after two years, I believe was your number, after the certificate of occupancy is approved, you will give us back our portion of the $75,000 cap. So with that, I do want to see a downtown Laguna de Gal project. One last comment I want to make on housing. I know a lot of people say, no housing, no housing, and again, I don't think that that's the best place for housing, but it's a reality of the deal. We're getting a lot for what we wanted for this deal. A lot of good things are coming, but as far as housing in Laguna de Gal, you know, my kids are about to go to college, and I want them to be able to come home after college and live somewhere here in Laguna de Gal, and I doubt at 22, 23, 24-years-old, they're going to be able to buy an $800,000 house. So I do think that having apartments in Laguna de Gal is a good idea for our children, our grandchildren, or people who are downsizing that still want to stay in this beautiful community. The traffic study will bear it out, but I do not see any traffic problems in this city when we don't have construction going on in the medians. I've driven around at 6:30, 7:30, 8:30, 9:30 in the morning, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, 30 in the afternoon, and yeah, you can't shoot straight out without hitting a traffic light. You know, that's a problem for some people, but we don't have traffic issues, as far as I can tell. So again, I'm in favor of this project. I don't like how we got here at all. I thought the county really mishandled this, and I'm not afraid to say that, but as far as the project and developer, I support that, and again, I hope that he will come true on his word and build it as he's shown. I hope he'll allow for some community use, including staging and things like that, in and out. And again, I would also tell the developer to be sure that he is right on his parking numbers for the housing as well, because we cannot have any issues where any of that is parking on the street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've been, excuse me, I've been impressed with this project since I first saw it, and the concept, as far as I can see, hasn't changed from that time. I realize that the housing element has caused some controversy, but I'm a former developer, I admit it, and this is not a very large project as housing projects go. It's 200 units, it's going to, I understand it's going to be a little upper-scale, probably won't generate as much traffic as you might think, and I think we have our premier traffic engineer here who sort of attested to that. I understand what the county is trying to accomplish here. They want to get a certain cash flow out of this project over an extended period of time. I think that's sort of the mantra they've adopted for a lot of their properties. I've read the paper where there's another one over by the old airport that is going to go a similar way, and the object is to get a more reliable income stream over the next 30, 40 years. And I understand this would probably be a very long-term lease. The one thing that, there was two things that I sort of was not uncomfortable, gave me a little bit of angst, the fact that we are the, actually going to be the applicant here. I think the county should have actually been the applicant, but then it was, I was persuaded that it really didn't make a lot of difference in this case, as far as the process is concerned. This project has to go through the regular process. It has to go through the, all the environmental reviews, goes through SEQA, and also onto the Planning Commission, and eventually a normal type of approval process. So it's going to be vetted very well, and to the extent that we end up with what I've seen so far, I'd be happy with it. I'm a little concerned about putting up all the money up front, the $150,000. I understand the county wanted to get some sort of a feeling that we were committed to this project, and I'm committed to having the process start, and I like the project, but if it starts coming out that there's something wrong here, doesn't necessarily mean that I would support it in the final analysis. So I would like to propose, and it's already been mentioned, that there'd be a 50-50 match on the environmental documentation costs, and that we put a cap of $75,000 on that, as far as the city's concerned, and that we get paid back at the appropriate time. I also would like the direction to be that this is specific to this project, that we don't want to see this project given to someone else, another party. I have, I have confidence in Lab Holdings. I've seen some of the things they've done, I've heard good reports in what they've done. They have a history of actually maintaining and keeping their projects and running them themselves, and I think they know what they're doing. So to the extent that they stay in the game, I'm all for this, and those are probably, and also, we would want a hard cap of 200 units, but that's sort of where I'm coming from. So I think we're about at the point where we need to get a motion here, and it's a little complicated motion, I guess, but I'd like to make the motion then, that we initiate the preparation of a general plan amendment and zone change necessary for the Agora development. That this plan amendment, general plan amendment and zone change is specific to the concept that we have been presented by the Lab Holdings and the County of Orange, that there be a cap of, hard cap of 200 units. That we split the cost 50-50 with a cap of $75,000 from the city, which will be repaid at, at least by certificate of occupancy, I guess, would be a good point.
Two years after.
Or, oh, two years after, I'll go with that. Two years after the certificate of occupancy. Does that cover everything?
Yeah.
That everybody is right. Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott. Okay. We have council reports. Oh, all right. Thank you all for coming. This is the most important part of the, okay, Ms. Genaway. Well, yeah, why don't you go ahead. Since you're ready.
Okay. I don't have a whole lot here. Again, I want to thank everybody for their diligent work on this. It was excellent work and a lot of effort, a lot of time, and appreciate the staff and council and the developers. I had, oh gosh, now I forgot what I was going to say. Where's my notes? Give me one second. Yeah, go ahead. I had it. Well, okay, that's it. I just want to thank everybody for that. Go ahead, move on.
Okay, thank you. Well, ditto to what Councilwoman Slusiewicz said, and also, I just want to give my most sincere congratulations to Councilman and Dr. Minigar. It's fantastic having an Eagle Scout in the family, so I know that takes a lot of support from the family, but that's a great achievement, and congratulations to your whole family.
I'm so glad that everyone else stayed, because this is riveting, you don't want to miss a report. I'm going to do a quick military update. First of all, just so you know, Military Appreciation Night, Chick-fil-A, I think this is maybe their third year that they're doing this, on Wednesday, May 20th, so it's tomorrow, from 4:00 to 7:00. If you are a veteran, they have free meals for you, and I highly recommend going there because we have, they have a lot of different groups that are sponsoring, they have music, bring the family, I'm going to be, I believe, serving. I've done it in the past, and it's a lot of fun. Also, really great news with our, all those that supported the golf tournament, this is so great. Last year was our first opportunity to do this, and I think we made around $5,000, $6,000. This year, we profited $26,000. So we quadrupled what we made in the first year, which really shows you, when you first do something, a fundraiser, especially something this big, you know, if you can break even the first year, great, but they tweaked it a little bit, learned where they could actually make more profit, and they just went above and beyond, and they're actually now, hopefully, going for double, they said, next year. So congratulations to them as well. Our USS Dock Day, they talked about perhaps leaving in October, January, so we're hoping we have them for a little bit, going there, and a little bit about the golf tournament. We had 91 golfers, 26 service people, and 26 volunteers, and 11 of them were sailors. So it was a great opportunity for everyone to get together, everyone had a great time, and thank you for all those that supported it. Real quick on the ACCLC, the Innovation Committee Golden Hub Awards will be presented on June 25th at the Discovery Cube. I hope everyone at the council can attend, it's a great event. I'm chair on that, and it's going to be a lot of fun. I don't believe we have any application we're presenting, but it's great to see. This year, we've changed the rules a little bit, procedures, so that it's not all one group. If you're over 100,000 people, it's one group, if you're under, so it's giving people, the cities, smaller ones, a little bit more opportunity to be presented there, because they don't have as big a staff, so excited about that. I attended the SCAG conference, they covered the transportation funding. As taxpayers, we will be getting hit, unfortunately, with a variety of different taxes when it comes to covering the huge amount of money that we owe in order to keep our roads and bridges up to standards. With TCA, they are working on the ability to use transponders as well, statewide as well as nationwide, so that's something that we're looking at. And also, in case you're a first-time driver, you can go onto your radio station of 1680 AM, and they will tell you how to pay for it, if you haven't paid for it, and that's for our toll road, but the foothills is 1690 AM. I was able to represent the city at the Boys and Girls Fundraiser at the Ritz-Carlton. They raised over, I think, $100,000. They did an incredible job for our Boys and Girls Club. I attended the ribbon cutting at the new luxury Vista Apartments, and I did want to make a comment in regards to the concern, which I had the concern too, of when we're building these, you know, are we taking more water? And actually, when you do these, and I wouldn't consider that so much high-density, but when you do the apartments, they actually take less, especially the new ones, because you have everyone under one roof, so you don't have individual backyards and front yards and pools. You also have all these brand-new efficiency appliances, so they're actually taking less water and energy than residents in single homes do. And, oh, I volunteered with the Lions for free eye exams with the Orange County Outreach Program, and thank you for everyone that attended and helped out. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
On Thursday, May 14th, per the request of Mr. Mayor, I attended the City Selection Committee at the City Council of, City of Tustin, to vote on the new commissioners for the Airport Land Use Commission, Orange County Parks Commission, and also LAFCO. And obviously, I voted for the person who's going to be benefiting this great city, without mentioning the names. We made the right choices. Second, I also attended the Military Support Committee's Golfing for the Heroes. It was a great success, it was well-organized, well-managed, as always. Last year, I played golf, this year, because of my personal, you know, commitments, I could not play golf. And last but not least, I wanted to take this opportunity and congratulate our new Director of Public Works, Mr. Nasser Abadzadeh, that accepted the hot seat with this city, that more than anybody else, I'll be scrutinizing every report, every project, to make sure that the taxpayers of this great city are getting the best benefits with regard to public works, and I'm pretty sure that he has already rolled up his sleeves and he's ready to move forward, because at every meeting, we're going to be asking for the status of the pending projects, and to make sure that the residents of this great city would be benefiting from the successful implementation of all the public works projects that we have in this city, because public works is the fundamental, you know, group of every city, because it provides project for the public. If there is no road, I cannot get to work. I cannot, you know, make money, nor I can spend money. Therefore, it's very crucial, and in this city, because of the past, I think this is the best time to pick up the ball and roll with it, and out of, I don't know, 40-plus candidates, I'm very pleased that the City Council made the final determination to pick the best for the job. And with that, I have no further comments.
Thank you.
I was going to do the golf thing, that's, I knew I had something, I couldn't remember what it was. I played golf, and it was great. Great job for the military support on organizing it, they did a fantastic job, and obviously, with the results of how much money they made, they really did a great job, and we had fun out there playing golf, so thank you very much.
It's my turn, okay. City Manager and I went to Sacramento to testify and give our support to the fire authority. There are some changes being proposed that would actually let us, well, would lose our representation as far as the fire authority is concerned, so we have been watching that. We testified, gave our support in any way for opposing the change where our fifth district would go down from 10, 10 people to two, and the balance of power would actually devolve up to the north. Also, on Saturday, went to a water save event with Multigill Water District, they had booths and demonstrations, and it was very instructive how we can save water, and there were a lot of vendors there, and that was very nice. Okay, I'm going to start in asking the staff if they have any reports. Chief?
Yes, sir. I would like to point out that Thursday, May 28th, at 5:30 PM, will be the Orange County Peace Officers Memorial and Candlelight Vigil at the Tustin Academy, the Orange County Sheriff's Regional Training Academy in Tustin. It's unfortunate, law enforcement is somewhat under assault nowadays, and assaults on police officers have increased. We've had a huge number of police officers killed just in this first quarter of 2015 throughout the country, and this is our opportunity, and the community's opportunity, to pay respects to all those brave men and women who've sacrificed their lives for public safety, and I would appreciate it. If anyone can go, it's a great ceremony, very solemn, very respectful, and it is a good opportunity to show your respects for those people who have given their lives for the community.
What was that date and time again?
Thursday, May 28th, Orange County Sheriff's Regional Training Academy, at 5:30 PM, and I will be there, and I believe-
Where's the regional training facility?
It's in Tustin, near the Blimpangers, the old Tustin Air Base. I don't have the address off the top of my head, it's on Armstrong. I will happily do that. I believe the City Manager will be attending with me.
Very good. Sure.
Mayor, Chief, I might be wrong on this, but the National Night Out, is that, is that the same night for every city? Because it's on a council meeting night, I think. It's on a Tuesday in, like, August, late August?
National Night Out actually is, it, some cities do it, I think it's a week later, Sergeant Songer, but in general, everybody does it on the same night, that's why they call it National Night Out.
Right.
There are some cities that do it slightly different day due to council, council meetings.
Okay, ours is falling on a council meeting.
It is.
Okay. Yeah, I went last year, but I didn't think it was a council meeting night, but anyways, okay, thank you.
Mr. Erlinson, do you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have one comment, Mr. Mayor. At your next meeting on June 2nd, you will be considering the fiscal year 2015, 2016 proposed budget, which includes all council adjustments, additions and deletions, that you gave staff during the budget workshop back in April. At that time, we're hoping that you approve of the budget and adopt it, and I welcome the public to come out if they would like to have any additional input. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, you have anything for us? Mr. Dixon, you have anything for us? Chief, Brian Bryce?
Hello, sir.
Ms. Colvin? Okay? Jeff Gibson?
Good evening, Mayor. The Community Development Department has issued occupancy permits to a specialty bakery called Suzie Cakes and a Starbucks drive-thru at the new commercial building at the Regency Theater site in the Center Ranch in De Gal, and they'll be opening for business, so residents will have-
Win.
Appreciate convenience to get their coffee on their way to the San Joaquin-
Win.
-transportation corridor. Suzie Cakes is currently open, I think they opened yesterday. We're hoping Starbucks would open yesterday, but I think possibly it'll be open today or tomorrow.
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gomez, you have anything for us? Okay, Ms. Giglio? Mr. Fox, Assistant City Manager?
In your red folders, there's some really pretty pictures of the progress at Crown Valley Park. We have all of the critters that have been created uniquely and specifically for this project, have been installed, so you have some pictures. I'm sure somebody will want to have a naming contest for all of those characters for the park. And then a picture of the amphitheater. They, last week, they were able to pour the dance floor and the stage top, and every day, they're making tremendous progress, and we are still working towards a ribbon cutting on June 23rd. So keep our fingers crossed everything comes together. I mean, we'll probably have a few little pickup items here and there, but we're hoping to make sure everything is working for our grand ribbon cutting for all the kids in the summer camps that week.
Mr. Abijad, thank you. This is your first meeting, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Mr. Mayor, council members, just to say that I'm very happy to be part of the city team. I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything you want to clean up with?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to note that the reason why Pauline didn't have anything to talk about is because she wants to get home to see the end of overtime, because the Ducks and the Chicago Blackhawks are playing in a deadlock tie, so I'm going to be very, very quick, even though we all know that I favor a team out of Los Angeles who's not in the playoffs this year. So she's telling me to hurry up. I do want to welcome Nasser to our staff team, and I just want to let the community know, and I appreciate Mr. Minigar, plus the entire councils. He comes to us with a wealth of experience locally here in South Orange County, from San Juan Capistrano, most recently out of Lawndale, Azusa, the list goes on and on. Most specifically, worked for Caltrans, and I think we're going to be able to capitalize on his experience that he's had with that state bureaucracy when we look forward to transportation dollars and trying to see if we could leverage our capital investment. So we're glad Nasser's here. I can guarantee you, he has rolled up his sleeves, and I've seen him doing it, and I've seen him working with his staff, so I think it's one of our best appointments that we've had, and I can tell he's going to integrate quite well into this team. Secondly, I want to let the council know that I'll author a letter summarizing your actions tonight, since the county communicated us via letter. I'm going to make sure that the council's recommendations and your notes are placed within a letter as well, so the board actually knows what we did. So we'll put that letter together. I'll prepare it for the mayor's signature, since it was directed to him from the county board, and we'll make sure that's transmitted here tomorrow, if not by the end of the week. Besides that, I do want to say, in addition to the mayor's report on AB 1217, which is the bill to change the structure of OCFA, I believe it's one of the most egregious attacks on local control that I've ever seen. I think it's worse than the governor attacking redevelopment agencies. And I'll tell you, I was very proud of the fact to be able to sit and have a wonderful dinner with the mother of our city, our first mayor, and now Senator Pat Bates, and I believe, and I know, in fact, I'll say I know, that we have her support in attempting to debate this bill if and when it gets to the Senate side. So I will say, if anybody is interested in opposing that legislation, that's one bill that needs to die, and I hope that it does die in the Senate. With that, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. There be no further business. I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Adjourn.